The Board of Education meeting is called to order. We'll start with the pledge.
The allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call attendance. Marty?
Mary Jo Rossmaske?
Here.
Mary Jo Reddick?
Here.
Tom Epps?
Here.
Troy Webb?
Here.
Amy Huffman?
Here.
Ann Deemer? Brad Dawes?
Here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been notified according to public meeting law?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. In honor of November being Native American Heritage Month, we'd like to start out with a video called "The Drum." It replaces the mini powwow that usually happens in this month, and it was created by adults guiding our students. And we'll start out with that. This is from last spring.
You know, this drum, this big drum that we use at these powwows, you know, it wasn't always like that. We used a smaller drum, a hand drum. And like a lot of tribes, a lot of nations, we have stories and songs of how they got this drum and...
My name is Les Claude. I dance because it's part of who I am. I also dance for my grandparents and my relatives and all the people who are sick.
My tribe is Ho-Chung, part of the Ho-Chung tribe. The reason I dance is because it makes me feel good. And then I like to, when I dance, I feel like I make other people feel good.
A lot of people have different names. For our nation, we call them baki, that drum, that grandpa, you know, would take care of him like he's a relative and like he's a life, it's a life being to us. We sing and when our warriors come back or when they go to war, we sing songs. We have family songs, joyous songs, and songs about the wars and endeavors that we might have seen with folks back then. We created these songs and a lot of these songs, you know, we got them from animals and our beliefs, these animals taught us a lot of these songs. So, good. Most important thing to know is that there's a lot of, there's a lot of different nations, a lot of different tribes, and everybody has their own story of how these drums came around. And not everybody's wrong, you know. That's what you have to, to think about is, you know, everybody's got their own story and you kind of go along with it and respect, respect that way and respect how they, how they treat that drum.
That was beautiful. It was created by Shane Yellowfender of the Ho-Chung Nation. It is also American Education Week, so we'd love to celebrate this, this month. We'll start with our board commendation. Renell Smith is not here, but we'll talk about that for her.
Sure. So we wanted to recognize Renell Smith. She is a longtime community member and just has this incredible passion for knitting. And on top of her passion for knitting, she has an incredible passion for serving others through her talents. And so, last year she made a huge bag of beautiful, like, all different designs, not just all of them the same, but tons of different colors and designs of cats and donated them all to Red Creek. This year she made another bag, and I was going to bring it along, but it's sitting in my office, darn it. They're just absolutely beautiful designs, and they are for middle school and high school students. They're a little bit larger. And when I said that I wanted to recognize her, she said that she wants to emphasize is that she would love to encourage other community members to take something that they are passionate about and that they enjoy and find a way to use that passion and skill to serve others in our community. And so, we wanted to recognize Renell for her generosity and I'm sure there's going to be lots of kids with warm, getting a lot warmer this winter because of her time spent knitting. So we wanted to recognize her. She was unable to be here, but we will mail her certificate.
Do we have the public comment items?
Yeah.
So we know...
COVID update, so 5.6 is the only one. The COVID 5.6, are you the only one?
Okay, so I make a motion to move COVID update 5.6 to the end of the meeting.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. The next, we'll have gifts and grants. We do have some to talk about.
There were two small grants that were awarded to FFA and FCCLA. Both Brad Markards and Sarah Helgerson received $250 from the Jackson County Dairy Promotion Committee to be used for dairy products in both of their programs. So, congratulations to them and will be some good work done in both FFA and FCCLA.
Thank you. We need to have a motion to approve those. I make that motion?
Second.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is Indian Policies and Procedures.
Annually, the district is required to review the Indian Policies and Procedures. We used to title that policy District and Tribal Communication and Collaboration. The federal program that is Impact Aid requires, they have a set format that each district that receives Impact Aid dollars must follow. And so, our Indian Policies and Procedures very much mirror those federal guidelines. There, as you can see, as the years have gone by, they have tried to increase very, very, very intentional communication and information sharing back and forth between the tribal agencies and with the school district. I will tell you that the primary vehicle through which we meet those obligations are through our Parent Advisory Committee, which Laura Simonsen is our Title VI Administrator, and so she facilitates a great deal of those. Over the years, we've tried a lot of different timing for those PAF meetings to try to encourage more involvement. Right now, they happen during lunch hour and they are piggybacked off the Johnson O'Malley or the JOM committee meetings because they have parents that attend that meeting hoping that they would stay for both of them. Since COVID, it has been extremely, extremely low participation. Bethany Redbird has been our primary contact, and she and Laura work together a great deal, meaning the obligations as established in Policy 811.1. Anybody have questions or comments or...
Do we have a representative from the board on that?
On the Parent Advisory Committee, we do not currently have that. That is certainly something that we would look for.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was trying to...
Okay.
Yeah, there's no light. Just put it up. There you go.
Okay. So, in here, it says that we communicate with families that are living on tribal lands, basically, but what about families that aren't? Do we try to make, still make sure to communicate and...
Absolutely. All of our practices are to anybody that comes, we never talk about residents at all. The Parent Advisory Committee is typically made up of people who have, who have their Ho-Chung tribal members, and we don't ever talk about where they live. It is more about their affiliation with the Ho-Chung Nation. And so, our services, we typically talk to the Education Department or to that Parent Advisory Committee. Ho-Chung lands are very different, obviously, because there's not a reservation. There are boundaries of Ho-Chung lands that are used for our Impact Aid calculation, but that's not a factor in our communications or participation.
And then, the other question I had, and I think it was just this one policy, if I'm mistaken, I apologize. But we're supposed to pay attention to the number, the numbers of, in participation with extracurricular activities. And I know that we always see the numbers, the breakdown of numbers for the sports, but what about other things? I guess I don't recall if we've, we've seen numbers in other, in other areas, whether it's clubs or the academics, like, you know, I guess placement courses or maybe math and sciences that are beyond what's required or...
Sure. That's a great question. And honestly, I think you're really going to like the new state report card that is supposed to be public tomorrow, not tonight. It actually tracks participation in dual credit, AP courses, drama, music, theater, and it has the chart that breaks it down by the demographic groups as well. And so, all of that will be very publicly reported. Our numbers aren't accurate this first year in the AP area, but that's right, we're fixing it. We have always collected that data for our AP courses and our dual credit. We haven't necessarily reported out because the board hasn't necessarily asked. So, we have that data and can certainly share it. This year, you will be able to find it at a very quick glance. I don't believe anybody tracks math and science courses above what's required. So you're talking like a fourth year of math or a, yeah, I don't know that we track that, but certainly, what, if the board were interested in that report as well.
It just seems like a desire to pull gaps and, you know, it's specifically addressing academic and whole curricular programs, so that just seems like it would fit into that criteria.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments?
If I could just ask if that makes sense to, so right now we do our whole curricular in June. I'm just thinking of the core attendants to make sure we don't lose this thought. Would we like to have all of that packaged in June or in November when we annually approve this report? Is that when you'd like to see the compilation of all the data that goes along with this policy? Or would you, whatever the wishes of the board?
In June, it is the summary of the year, though, right?
Yep. So if we did November, it could be the, you know, I mean, you're going to be, yeah.
We'd say at the end of the, end of school year then, when we're doing that, it would be fine.
I hear, I see some heads nodding. Mary Jones, the other company?
At first I thought it would be better during this month, but thinking it over, I think the end of the year would make more sense where you have the current data.
Any more questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve Policy 111.1. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the School Resource Officer Report. Invite Kyle Naskish up.
You were going as far away from this as you could, weren't you? You were going as far away from this as you could, weren't you?
No chair I could find without arms on it. I don't see any chairs with arms with all this stuff on it. So, um, so I basically put together a similar presentation to what we did last year.
Make sense? Is that projecting to the back? Can you hear him or...? Yes, okay, perfect. I just wasn't sure.
So it's similar to what we did last year, and again, this is a annual kind of update on where we're at. It was decided last year that you guys wanted to annually kind of come back around and see where we're at with program, what's been going on, what type of activity we've had. And so, this year, my schedule is similar to what it's always been in the past, doesn't really change. I do a half day in each district being shared between the three districts, which puts me in each district about three to four days a week. So I'm here for about half a day, three to four days a week. This year, that totaled up to, let's see if I can see on there, about 135, about 135 days altogether, either part or all of the day, depending on what, what we had going on. Some days, I end up here all day. For instance, like the last couple of weeks, we were doing QPR training. So that, to do the freshmen and sophomores, ended up being a couple of days where I was just in district all day, trying to take care of that and then follow up on other stuff. So...
What is QPR?
It's a, it's a suicide prevention program that we teach the freshmen normally. It is, this year, we had to do both freshmen and sophomores because last year, we kind of missed the sophomores. We didn't have the opportunity to do them. So, it's a question persuade refer is what it, what it comes down to is. You have concerns or afraid for a friend's safety, how do you ask that question, that really tough, difficult question, you know, kind of to find out if, if that is what they're thinking of, if that's what's on their mind? How do we ask that question? And what do we do from there? Who do we get to, to help us out with that referral? So...
How about NetSmarts? I assume it's with the World Wide Web.
Yep. So, NetSmarts is a program or it's a, it's a whole bunch of curriculum and information available through the National Center for Missing and Invaded Children. And they put this together. To be honest, some of it's getting a little bit dated, but it's still really valuable. And it covers everything from internet safety to, you know, from every, every age group. So like kindergarten, 4K, all the way up to high schoolers. They've got curriculum and presentations and whatnot. We've got stuff for parents if we ever decided we wanted to present that as well. And it's free curriculum that's available. And so, in some cases, you know, I've talked to the different schools and tried to make that, make them aware of that and use, use some of the videos and other little video games and stuff like that available on there. And then the presentations, I usually come in and give those presentations to, mostly our focus up to this point has been on the middle school through high school age. So we've done, the last couple of years, have done sixth, seventh, eighth graders, freshmen at the high school and just kind of get that middle range there. But I know we've had interest and talked a bunch about trying to figure out where to fit in the schedule to even get some of the younger kids down, down over at Red Creek or, you know, get some of the other grades as, as needed. So other than that, the training and presentations that I perform for the schools, since we're kind of on that topic. Outside of that, Alice is kind of an ongoing thing. So I help with incoming staff members and keeping everyone up to date on that, as well as helping to coordinate any drills or training available. But also, we do have other Alice-trained instructors within the district that can handle a lot of that. I'm usually just around as kind of an additional resource for that. I try and leave a lot of it up to our Alice-trained instructors in the district so that they have that ownership on it and are handling it on, in their individual buildings and their areas. And then I just kind of come in and provide whatever other resources they need to make things successful.
Kyle?
Yep?
Oh, right up here.
Sorry. The speaker's very, coming right at me.
Could you also explain what Alice is? I know I've, I've been in your class, but I, some people don't.
Yeah, so Alice is a active threat response plan, so active shooter response. And it's alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. They're kind of, we just had a big update from Alice on the instructor course. And they're kind of going away from the acronym of Alice and breaking it into sections. So, being alert and informed would kind of be one section because they're all information-based, right? And then you have lockdown, counter, and evacuate being your action steps. And those would be a separate phase of the instruction as far as your action or what you're doing in response to that information provided. And that, that goes right along with all the federal guidelines with run, hide, fight, get up, hide up, take out, whatever you want to call it. There's any number of them out there that teach a very similar response plan or, or a very response plan. So, um, so kind of, let's see, we cover QPR, NetSmarts, Alice. Stop the Bleed is a kind of an advanced first aid class that we figured out how to get qualified as instructors, as law enforcement officers, and a bunch, a couple of swan did that. And I've offered that the last couple of years to the health class to be an additional training on top of their CPR and first aid that they're already getting as freshmen. So we, we add in some of that Stop the Bleed, which is some additional training on bleeding control and kind of more advanced bleeding control techniques with pressure dressings and tourniquets and stuff like that. So, kind of that good general knowledge that I think really should be pushed out to the communities anyways. And if I can get everyone coming out of high school knowing how to do those things, it's amazing how many lives we could save. Because we just talked the other day at training about how many tourniquet applications our deputies have been doing out in the field. And it's, I don't know that we have solid numbers on it, but it's getting pretty significant. So, other than that, just a variety of, of different activities that I try and make myself available for. Career days, I've been helping out with the, some of the high school wrestlers wanted to have the wrestling room opened up during lunch and learn. So it's kind of, they used to be my sport, so I wanted to help them out and offer myself when I'm available to open that up and let them have some open mat time. Various discussions in our different government social space classes, whenever I happen to, to be around. Talked to the law and government classes in the past on more kind of formalized matters where we set up a topic and, and have those discussions throughout the year, depending on where they're at in their curriculum. But also, you know, just whenever I happen to be walking by and hear something interesting, sometimes I'll stop in and talk in Eli's class or whoever happened to be discussing something with the door open. So... Then we get to kind of the, the law enforcement part, which realistically, everyone, everyone sees the uniform, sees me as a law enforcement officer, and thinks that this is kind of mostly what I do. Honestly, this is probably less than a third of what I do on a regular basis. But I put this in here for you guys to see kind of the variety of different things we've been dealing with. Obviously, the substance abuse, controlled substances has been a, has been an issue. And this is kind of, we're battling a, a time in our society or a time in our culture where we're kind of stuck in the middle. So we're stuck in Wisconsin with Michigan being recreationally legal and Illinois being recreationally legal on either side of us. And we're still in the, the classic, you know, following federal guidelines of, as a Class One controlled substance for marijuana. And it's, it's a, we're fighting a heck of a battle trying to, trying to deal with that stuff when it's so freely available for anyone who has the gas money to drive across the border.
Kyle, is it primarily marijuana that you receive?
Yes, absolutely.
Like 100% absolutely or...?
Marijuana and THC. So basically, yes. Yep. Everything that I've been dealing with has been marijuana slash THC of one variety. It's actually pretty, become pretty rare to see like actual dried plant material marijuana, right? Most of it is, is the THC vapes and stuff like that that we've been funding. So, I guess, I don't know, if you guys have any other questions in regards to those, I can, I can't really talk about specific cases, but I'm trying to answer any of that, but the information is there. This is, for the most part, most of this is the same as what, what we talked about last year. I added a couple of things on the bottom as far as some other webinars and whatnot that I've done over the last year since, since we talked last. Other than that, these are the variety of different training courses that I've, that I've gone to in preparation for this position and through the last couple of years to, to try and get up to speed with, with this position. Kind of a, a little bit of a side note is, you know, for the last year, the Wisconsin legislator, or legislature has passed, passed a law that requires school resource officers to be appropriately trained. What they stated as appropriately trained is the basic SRO course from NASSRO, which I already have. So we're, we're good on that. And then, yeah, if you got something, go ahead. This is just, this is the tri model from NASSRO. Go ahead.
Does anyone have any questions? Oh, I thought you were...
Oh. Oh. So, the tri model from NASSRO, like I said, the law enforcement part of things, which includes not just, you know, taking criminal cases and stuff like that, but that's the security aspect, that's the, kind of Alice falls into that kind of stuff. Building security, site security, just kind of general security stuff, is really only, that whole block is, is only like a third of what, what they expect of a school resource officer to be handling. Most of what we end up doing, what I end up doing, is, is kind of more in that informal counselor slash mentor frame and then the informal educator kind of being that resource for our education staff to be able to, to use me to, to help support what they're doing. So whenever we have those opportunities, trying to, trying to do that as much as possible. I'm the law enforcement side. My, my philosophy is still the same as it was when we started this, that my goal is not to, not to take anything that we're doing and try and make anything a law enforcement issue. If it's not a law enforcement issue, then it doesn't need to become one. If we can handle it as a school discipline issue, if we have something that, that is, you know, is able to be handled as school discipline in most, and, you know, 99.9% of the time, I'm going to say handle it as school discipline. Like, we don't need to push things into, into a law enforcement or criminal justice realm until it gets to that point where it absolutely has to go there. You know, we're dealing with juveniles that, you know, are, are definitely not always thinking yet, thinking in their, in the right mind the way we would see that, that as adults. So, so we're going to try and give them opportunities to make mistakes and, and learn from them rather than have those mistakes follow them. So, what else do we have here? I put these in here just as some resources for you guys to, to look up on your own. The first one, the YouTube video is a, is a video, I believe, from getting the right organizations, from one of the school safety organizations out of the University of Michigan. They put it together, a really good kind of five steps video on school resource officers and just some, some things to keep in mind about what the job is about and what, what things we should make sure we're keeping our eye on, focusing on, and kind of, you know, just some insights into, into the job. And then the other one is just the website for NASSRO, for the National School Resource Officer Association website, which has a ton of other information on there. They have, I think they just updated their best practices PDF on there to, that you guys can review if you, if you wish to. Successes and struggles that we've been dealing with here recently. Successes, I think, you know, the, the presentations and, and different educational opportunities I've been trying to, to provide as much as possible and trainings have been, have been a big success, especially trying to get those kind of things in over the last year or so with COVID and everything else going on. The connections made with students and staff, I think, are, are always a success in this area. I think we're doing really good on that. I have definitely noticed over the past three years, more and more often, I have students coming up to me for help, coming up to me, you know, telling me things that are going on, asking me how for help, coming up to me, you know, um, telling me things that are going on, asking me how to, you know, how they should handle things. Um, you know, working through, through issues and, and, you know, trying to, wanting to talk things out with me. So I think that, to me, that's a huge success that, that I'm, they're seeing me as approachable enough to come up and, and report things that are going on, tell me about things in their own life, all that kind of stuff. So, um, that and then, you know, along with connecting with the school and with the students in each district, also kind of being that conduit between all three districts has been a, a big help, I think, to, to be able to make sure that, uh, that everyone's kind of on the same page when we're talking stuff like Alice and reunification stuff and all these other ideas. And making sure that we're trying to set up systems so that we can, um, can help support each other within the county too. Uh, struggles, um, some of these are just general struggles that come along with the school resource officer position or school resource safety position. Um, some of these other things have been, you know, kind of COVID featured, right? So trying to figure out how we are going to address truancy and stuff like that in a COVID world has been a huge struggle to figure out exactly where does that come into play and how do we best handle that? And, and, you know, especially last year when we had so many kids out on virtual, where do we, where do we handle that and what's the best appropriate way to do that? So, um, that was definitely a big struggle, um, going along. And then, um, you know, along with that kind of COVID related is some of the things that, that have been, um, that battle between infection, or infection control measures and COVID measures and building security. And some of those don't necessarily mix. And we're, um, we're having to make decisions back and forth about what's the, um, what's the appropriate way to handle something that may not, um, may not fit into both worlds, right? We have to choose one over the other in some cases.
Could you elaborate on that first struggle about knowing where your authority is?
Yeah, I was kind of coming around back to that one to talk a little bit more. So, so that's kind of a general area of, of struggle within kind of being a school resource officer. Because my authority comes in as, as a deputy under the Jackson County Sheriff's Office. So I'm here, you know, to, it's, the easy answer for me is, is kind of the enforce laws stuff, right? That, that's a, that's something that's right in my wheelhouse. It's very easy for me to handle. Um, the more complicated issue comes in is where my authority comes in handling issues of like school policy. Um, and what, to what extent I can step in to enforce or to, to handle issues of school policy. Um, because there, there are restrictions that, as far as what I can do based on, um, based on my position as a, as a deputy, um, when I have to a lot of times kind of refer things back to the school as far as, you know, policy issue, right? So, uh, an area where maybe I can't necessarily make the decision on how that gets enforced because of the, because of the situation I'm sitting in. That help make sense a little bit? It's kind of a complicated situation in and of itself.
It depends on the policy.
It really does. Yeah.
And kind of wouldn't you say that sometimes even further complicated by the city of Black River Falls and there
Correct.
There are things that city officers can do that a county sheriff deputy cannot do. And so it does, there's a lot interwoven happening, interplay happening.
Yeah, and try to figure out the best, most appropriate way to handle something and who's, who has the authority to handle it? Who has the authority to make a decision on how to, how to enforce certain laws or issues or policies or whatever we're dealing with, right? Um, yeah, that, that sometimes gets a little complicated and becomes kind of a struggle to decide who actually has to make the decision. So, and then this is just kind of a final statement. Um, just some questions for you guys on, you know, considering how we're, how we're assessing the value. Um, positions like this tend to suffer from, um, from the, the issue of trying to prove the negatives, right? How do we prove, how do we show that someone didn't commit a crime or didn't do something because of this, um, because of the school resource deputy being there, because of my, my influence or whatnot? Um, and it's, I don't know, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of things that I, I feel like will make a really good impact, but it's really hard to give you quantitative numbers as far as the success aspect of it. Um, and that's, that was kind of one of the downfalls with, um, with like the, uh, the dare program and stuff like that, had a lot of problems with that and that, and there's really hard to prove how many kids didn't use drugs because they went to dare, right? So, um, ultimately, I think this is a really successful program and a really beneficial program. I think we can, um, I strive as much as I possibly can to, to try and, um, come up with more ways to, to make myself more useful. Um, if, if you guys ever come across something that, that you think would be a good fit for, for my position to be able to, um, to present or to offer or, um, or to be more involved in, uh, definitely, please let me know. Please pass along and more than, more than willing to take a try at anything to see if we can try and um, add more value to this position, add more value to what, uh, what we're offering.
Well, I was going to turn that question around on you already. What question, what recommendations do you have for us? Is there anything we should be doing at the board level that could make you more useful?
Um.
You, you can give me a moment.
Yeah, no, I guess, um, I would have to sit and think on that one for a little bit.
I was just thinking through your involvement and I'm going to get the national organization on NASTRO, is that right?
Yeah.
And seeing other districts, um, you know, obviously, when you get out and get to see more things like that, you can provide some insight on something that we haven't thought of, and I don't know what that is.
Yeah, and honestly, I'll, I'll have to think on that and try and get back to you, but.
And, and also let you know that Coach Markey is looking for folks to help out the first Saturday in December.
First Saturday? He's already nipping up on that one, yeah.
So I'll see you there.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Just a reminder to all board members, the contract for Kyle's services is actually a partnership between Jackson County, the Motec Nation, and all three of the school districts involved, just to, as a reminder of the financial obligation that we have to the program. And I would just add, um, that Kyle is always a great advocate. When he goes to trainings, he comes back and I feel like more often than not, I'm like, we can't do that. We can't push more training out right now. And, and we were really, um, very well ahead of many of our peers on some of our Alice training. And then COVID hit and honestly, so much of that mitigation stuff and training and all that stuff, we really haven't been as diligent. But certainly spent plenty of time with our new staff this year, making sure they were prepared and all of that stuff. But Kyle's a great advocate for, um, when he hears of things that are being successful in other districts, bringing it back and trying to figure out how we can implement it. So he's a good advocate in that way.
Well, thank you for being, building all those positive relationships with students.
Thank you.
That's, that's what it's all about. Any, any questions or comments for Kyle?
No, just thank you, Kyle, for all, for all that you do for the school district. It's, uh, great to hear and, uh, wonderful role model that you are and, uh, glad to hear that things are going well.
Thank you.
You want to introduce your helper? He keeps getting closer and closer.
Yeah. He's here for moral support tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you so very much for. Next, we'll discuss the traffic concerns that were brought to our attention.
All right. So, um, you were each notified of some concerns with the traffic flow coming, um, between the middle school and the football field heading up onto Tyler Street. And I wanted to let you know that, um, we weren't aware of that problem beforehand, so I appreciated you guys sharing that with me. Um, a couple of things on there. First, uh, the fact that most of our students are parking in the Linda Theater parking lot. We actually have fewer high school students driving up that road than ever before. Um, it's actually become a one-way going through there. We have middle school parents, if you've ever been out there during that time, we have middle school parents who park along Tyler Street up there and their kids just know to walk up and meet them up there. Um, the challenge is almost everybody wants to come out and turn right. And that is where the sidewalk is. When you get to the Tyler, the other side of Tyler Street, there are no sidewalks on any of those areas. So it's not like we can make a great big crosswalk and make it more um, obvious in any way because there's no sidewalks to connect it to. And so in our brainstorming, a couple of different things. One, uh, we asked the high school to please be helpful in making some public service announcements to the high school students about making sure they are careful and cautious as they are driving. Um, a side note, in our last construction meeting, um, the Myron, uh, folks said that there, that alleyway between the fencing and the construction trailers, that's pretty narrow. And they, after, uh, probably the first couple of weeks of school, they put speed bumps, the, the low-rise speed bumps down. And the gentleman who spends the most time in that trailer said to us last time we were there, he goes, all that speed bump does is make some of the kids drop their phone when they are driving over it. And so they were also very concerned about the safety of drivers. I might have also shared with them, remember, due to COVID, we have a lot of brand new drivers that didn't have to take a driver's test, right? And, and so it's kind of this perfect storm and I'm not trying to make light of it, but there's a lot going on when it comes to our student drivers. And so, um, I had emailed, um, Kim and Luke, but also Julie Tiedens and asked if her creative, um, morning announcement videos could come up with some kind of public service announcements about safety as well. Because there's no sidewalk on the other side, we have a crosswalk. Um, if you're coming along Tyler, um, on middle school side and to the football field connects to the, um, the park, um, we were, the Linda Park, Hoffman Aquatic Center, sorry. We were going to try to increase the painting and the crosswalks so that our students would walk up our sidewalk. They would cross to the other side and then could cross over Tyler because the majority of the traffic is turning right. So if they cross over here before they cross, they will be missing the majority of that. Um, of course, the day we go to, um, talk about where we're going to paint was our rain day last week and so that hasn't happened yet. But we're hoping the public service announcements, the announcement reminders, um, Kyle can spend any afternoons up there that he might possibly have. Um, and then trying to do some redirecting of our walkers. There's not very many walkers at all. Um, but those are our initial thoughts at this time.
This is a slightly, uh, unrelated in that it's a winter concern, is that even though that hill is not very safe going up Tyler, the littlest bit of icingness causes a lot of people to slide because of traffic and everything else. Is there, have we ever given any thought to how we can alleviate that?
We can certainly be more aggressive with the salting and sanding. I mean, I think that's probably our best, uh, strategy is just to try to be more aggressive. You're absolutely right. There are times when, um, I can remember just a few days when it's actively leaving or, you know, when we're driving as it's coming down and the traffic's slowly starting to slide back, absolutely. Um, I think snow removal in that full site is going to be a challenge because of that narrow passageway between the new construction and the trailers. Your speed bumps are going to have to come out the first time we have to plow because you can't go over those. And so, um, yeah, we absolutely can, um, talk with Kent and, and the rest of the crew and just see if we can be preemptive a little bit more with the sand and the salt on that hill.
Any other questions or comments about the traffic? We'll move on to focus on purpose for world languages.
Good evening. Um, we are the World Languages Department. I am Jenny Raffarina and Martha Raffarina and Gina Martin. Um, so we'll just talk through our presentation and field questions as they come.
Can everyone see her mask? That packs me up every time I see it. I absolutely love it. Can you see it's all clear plastic so that you can see all her diction and her smile and all of it. So I'm sorry.
I need them to see my mouth. Okay, so, um, the big ideas or guarantees of all levels, kind of across the board, um, are that we are striving to prepare students to be able to communicate in our given languages. Um, so interpersonal communication would be conversational. So can you understand and communicate with someone else spontaneously in the target language interpretive? Um, and that's just, and we understand what we read and what we hear in our target language. Um, and then presentational, can we express our ideas through speaking or writing? Um, you know, in a presentation rather than a conversation. So those are kind of our big, a big guarantee. Um, in our beginning levels, um, we start with the most high-frequency vocabulary so that we're giving students the words that they need the most. Um, and so that includes what you call the super sound and high-frequency verbs um, that basically are what you would need to be able to tell a story to somebody. Um, and that tends to start out in the present tense, although if it comes up, we can talk about the past or the future. Um, and, and then, um, do you guys want to talk about positionals or po-trum?
So just another part that other languages don't have that Motec has are positionals, which is a way to talk about things that are ongoing or habitual. And so it's very important to teach that at the beginning stages of po-trum. That's kind of a bit harder for students to grasp, so that's just like a little extra thing that we have to master on because that is framework and all parts of the language.
Okay, so in the next level, uh, we increased the, um, number of verbs and words. Um, and also we try to have students be able to express themselves across tenses of telling a story about what's going to happen, talking about plans for the future. Um, so it just, you know, we start with where students are and we just try to bring them farther along, um, with the complexity of the language that they're able to understand and use. As they speak and read and write and listen. Oh, okay. So then as we get to the, the slide looks so similar.
Jill's cooking that.
All right. So, um, as we get to the, even, um, the sort of top levels that we offer, then we also are talking in different moods. So not only past, present and future, but also, um, you know, talking about what I want, but someone else would do and, um, some of those commands and different means of communication. So. Okay, and then, one more aspect of the big ideas, ideas or guarantees of the levels. Um, we talk with students about, you know, always striving to say the most that they possibly could. So, you know, the beginning level would be that basic response, you know, she's happy. Um, and then, uh, if they can, we'd like them to add an introduction, like today she is happy. And then maybe they could be on, go beyond that and say, today she's happy because it's Friday and had a reason. And maybe, you know, if they are up for challenging themselves even more, they could give them an example. Today, she's happy because it's Friday and I know that because every Friday she says she's happy. So it's just, you know, it's kind of, that's how we differentiate for students that are ready for more. We're always like, you know, okay, could we add a little more? Here are some ways that we could expand. Um, our priorities, um, some of our priorities in our rooms are creating a positive community. Um, the three of us all seek with comprehensible input where we're trying to, um, speak to students with languages they're going to understand and, and keep it, you know, adding more and more as we go. Um, and so for that to work, we have a positive atmosphere. Um, so we really, we really stress, you know, we are Black River Falls and we listen and we look and we participate and speak and we respect each other and ourselves and perhaps and, um, you know, I think it goes a long way to maybe then affect each other in the world. Um, another priority is keeping different voices filed in mind. Um, so our, um, comprehensible input stories, um, we teach the stories that include signs and gestures you like to teach in caption for a caption word, um, and that helps students to make a connection and also to be a little bit active for some of our, um, students that need to move. Um, we use a lot of images to help make words seem more comprehensible. Um, we have vocabulary posters around the room and we, we sort of state to the students, if you need to look, look because I want you to understand me. If you don't need to, then you probably won't. Um, so. And we do use them. Okay, we'll go to that one. So sorry, no, that's okay. I just
You want to go ahead?
I'm trying to remember what I meant to say. Oh, traps. So sometimes we use traps in our classes and. So sometimes we use traps in our classes and um technology, if there's another um tool that has helped us add some to it. Okay. Um so sorry, I mentioned comprehensible input a little bit. Um so we try to teach good stories because that makes things more interesting. And we also personalize everything, everything we, um every class is a little bit different because of the students we have. Um and then, oh, I guess I talked about the different modes, so presentational, speaking and writing, um students can present their ideas by writing and speaking. All of the stories that we use in class and the ones that they can't read. In interpersonal, it's that conversational mode where students are, you know, talking to each other about their own lives and about the world we're dealing with in class. Okay, and then we, several years ago, we got a grant to um purchase some classroom novels. So we can see our library there. Um and we use those, sometimes we do novels as a class. And so we all read the same book and we talk about it together. And then another way that we use our novels is we sit on the reading where students are about 10 minutes and then they would talk about what I've been reading. Okay, so in 2018, the last time we presented, this is what we were working on. Uh I think I've touched on a lot of these items already. Record alignment for the student future, we always like to mention that there are retro credits available when they go on to college. They can earn credits like this means a high level class, so. Okay, let's go to the next one. Um this year, we are focusing on the great date, those um strategies that give us the most impact in education. And this year especially, we're working on multiple programs. So part of that goes along with our move toward standard-based education. Um and we in our department are working really hard to talk to kids about, okay, what is the standard that you need to meet? What's the level you need to reach? Where are you right now and what are we to do to move along by the end of the transition? And visually seeing everything and having students um evaluate themselves with a rubric and then we sit down and talk with them about. That's the main new um thing that we're working on this year. And here are some of those testing assessments. So you can see this is one student um during the time I started that the one on the left was after, you know, a few weeks of reading class and then two weeks later and then two weeks after that, you can see that they they really do grow and it's neat for them to see their own growth and track their own growth.
So we're working on most of the same things in Ho-Chunk. Uh since I have been at this school as well, with your teaching Ho-Chunk, we have really tried to align with the Spanish department to make sure that we're all kind of teaching on the same track. Um currently, um currently this trimester, I'm teaching Ho-Chunk one and Ho-Chunk two. And in Ho-Chunk one, I have 40 students enrolled and that's the highest amount of students I've ever had enrolled in that first level course. So the program has definitely been growing since I've been there. Um we actually had to add an extra section to the Ho-Chunk one this past year. Um currently, we're working on introductions, families and pets, um extracurricular speaking, unfamiliar topics, intuitive writing, unfamiliar topics, integration of technology for enhanced learning experience. So that's like look at so they can get um those repetitions in without feeling, hey, I'm doing this over and over, it's kind of amazing and then learning. Um Ho-Chunk two, I currently have 11 students. That um that number dropped mostly because of COVID and how hard it was for them to do the hybrid learning uh last year for Ho-Chunk one. Um I expect those numbers to increase next year, hopefully. Personal information, physical descriptions, what we're working on, um traditional stories, um embedded reading. So embedded reading is a chemical input um technique. It's where you take a complex story, break it down to its bare bones and slowly add in um details as you're going to different versions until you get to the final story that was the original. And by the time they get there, they can understand and read the whole thing. Um and what I do with the end of that is I have them make a book because we don't have a lot of reading materials in Ho-Chunk. So the students help create those materials that hopefully we can start building a library in the classroom. Um. And it's the same thing as the top, our personal speaking, our familiar traffic, intuitive writing, our familiar topics, and then the integration of technology for enhanced learning experience. Um future goals for Ho-Chunk? We are really looking to expand and add a Ho-Chunk four. Um I have had a lot of past students ask for this. Um and hopefully add an eighth grade Ho-Chunk. Um move to standards-based grading. Um we're a little bit slow on it with Ho-Chunk because I'm still trying to figure out how to do that. Um have more embedded readings for all levels of Ho-Chunk language. So that would be for us to translate more of our traditional stories and break them down for those embedded readings and have more of that culture in the classroom. Have more readings created for all levels of Ho-Chunk language and maintain Ho-Chunk one enrollment numbers and increase retention of students in the higher levels. And then here's some examples of the books that students have created. Um the tobacco story is the one I did this past trimester with the Ho-Chunk twos. Um the bottom one is a three little pig story and that one I did last spring with the Ho-Chunk threes that I had. And on to the right, that was actually an original story created with a one-word image, which is where I talk about this fictional thing in the room and we personalize it and we make a story about it and it's all in the language and the kids have a lot of fun with that. So hopefully we can do that again this year with my higher levels.
Any questions? What age do you start teaching the Ho-Chunk language, like in a class? I know it's embedded in a lot of our just daily activities, but what age do they start classes?
So we do have um some language in the head start, but then they don't get language again until um ninth grade where it's where they're learning. And we're working on more community programs for that. But as far as an official classroom for younger children, it's not until they're in ninth grade and they are having, they do have a bring a Ho-Chunk home with education program and that's very new. So those numbers as far as children taking that and learning from it, those haven't come back, but officially about that 14, 15 age.
Do you have Ho-Chunk three now? So you listed one and two with your class?
Um Ho-Chunk three, I have next trimester.
Okay.
And I believe I have about six students enrolled in that.
Is that a normal reading or a level class like that or?
Um as of right now, it has been. Um about six, seven students.
I think that's pretty normal for languages.
Yeah.
And then uh back to Spanish, I was wondering what what kind of numbers you guys have too? I was just curious if you'd be.
Uh it depends upon the year. Um we have this last year with uh with COVID, we weren't able to operate in eighth grade. So normally we would have a class of about 25 eighth graders come into Spanish one. Um so our numbers are kind of different now, the way that it's been, but we pretty much have stable numbers of of several sections in in level one, a couple in two, a couple in three, and then four or five usually is another section. But it it really depends on the year and these last few years haven't been extremely normal, so.
Right, and and that probably leads into the next answer. Do you guys do any travel with the language of the?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, usually, and that's the question that that was asked.
I've been in the world for like 10 months, so nothing's been normal since.
Right, uh so uh usually we travel about every two years. We take a group of students and we have traditionally gone to Costa Rica as our destination. And so for every two years, and we did have a trip planned two summers ago, um right when COVID was kind of getting to the the point that that it may travel not possible. And we had several trips in the district that were canceled. And luckily, we were with a nonprofit at that time where we were all offered the insurance that we had. So all students were able to get complete refund except for the deposit on that. So those students weren't able to travel and we did think about traveling this spring, but we kind of postponed it, not knowing. So our current plan is to travel not this summer, but the following summer uh with any students that reach level two in Spanish.
Can you just tell about your experiences when you were able to travel?
Oh, sure. Uh so we've been traveling uh to Costa Rica. We we have traveled to to Spain before, uh since I've been here. Uh this is about 20 years, 22 years now that we've been doing that. Um and uh we always tend to go to Costa Rica. In the last few trips, we've actually gone to Costa Rica and Nicaragua, um which is a nice experience for the students to be able to travel to a country and then cross the border in another country that has uh two uh separate cultures, even though the same language is spoken. So that's a really neat thing uh for the students. But we do all sorts of things. Uh on the tourism side, they have about a week of tourism where they do eco-tourism, they do real fun things uh like uh going to the cloud forest and ziplining in the cloud forest or um going to the beach and doing beach type of things or all things that you can do in Costa Rica. But the more important thing that they do is they stay with family by themselves for a week as well. So it's generally a 14, 15 day trip and all the things that you can imagine happen where they get to go uh to weddings, they get to go to uh different places, travel with the family and go to school. And so they have lots of, lots of neat experiences.
I just have one more question about Spanish. Now, in seventh grade, is that an introduction to all students?
Yes, so currently all seventh graders uh have it as a part of their specials or electives. So every seventh grader gets a Spanish experience unless there's a reason that they don't, maybe an intervention or other things. Uh but yeah, most, almost all seventh graders get that. In eighth grade currently, in Spanish, we have uh about 25 students that are taking it year long. So they're essentially taking a Spanish one level class uh and then they can go into high school and start with level two as freshmen if that's something that they choose.
I'm just curious if you know about any districts around here. I've often thought that a foreign language would be wonderful to start even earlier. Are there any districts around here that do start children in a foreign language any earlier than seventh grade?
Um there are some instances, I believe La Crosse has some uh schools that start earlier and some uh, I'm not sure if Lincoln Elementary has the program that they used to have anymore, I'm not sure of that. Um uh but as far as lower than uh seventh grade um or sixth grade in some instances, I don't know too many programs. There are immersion programs that exist within the state, um but locally not as many. Okay, they're 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 in my, I'm not sure. Um it always has been something that we've wanted to expand is uh we are able to.
And so just to speak to that point a little bit, that has been something that um the Rovinas have advocated for in the past. And our challenge usually comes down to clocking it. It's like, what are we not going to teach at the elementary level so that we can teach uh Spanish? And so the emergent schools are typically completely emergent so that the two languages are happening. And so that can't be done by a Spanish teacher trying to push in, that has to be emergent, like all teachers are fluent. And so that's been some of our challenges, but certainly something that they've been very interested in talking about moving forward. So but our challenge is always, what are we not going to do at the elementary level that we're going to add this opportunity? I also just wanted to remind everyone um in speaking about the Ho-Chunk language that our district is part of a consortium uh in a grant with the DPI, the American Indian Language Revitalization Grant. Um and this is probably our fourth year, I think, fourth or fifth year that we've been heard of this with um Baraboo, Wisconsin Dells, Toma and the school district of Black River Falls. And so um Gina, I I would just offer that I think a large part of why the numbers are growing is because Gina has been such a consistent presence in that role. Um Gina actually works for the Ho-Chunk Nation Language Department, not for the school district. We are incredibly appreciative that she has been with us for as long as she has because um particularly in the electos, the the relationships you build with the kids matters in their course selection. And so I really strongly believe the kids are choosing that because of that learning environment. And I was lucky enough to sit in a couple of classes and boy, it's an active room to be sure, but they're all um doing, doing great things. So just would offer that as well.
Yeah, another thing too that is going on is that um we are working with UW Baraboo to work in college credit for Ho-Chunk language. So hopefully it'll be something similar where they can get retro credits for Ho-Chunk language if they go to UW Baraboo.
Excellent.
Are there any question, any other questions? Well, thank you, spoke very much. Thank you. Okay. Employment recommendations, we have none at this point, but I understand we are having difficulty finding applicants for support positions.
We have two longer term support staff positions that need to be filled and then we just posted for three new ones uh because of new students or newly qualified for special uh education services. So um we are hoping that the great candidates just keep coming, so.
Next is date of review for student success.
And so I'm going to table that one. Um I was, when I, like I said, when I made the agenda, I was really hopeful that the date of the DPI said they were going to unembargo the state report card, they said early November. I thought November 15th, we would be good. Um I saw last week DPI said November 16th is when they unembargoed. So I am going to table that until we can talk more freely about them.
Okay, thank you. And we have Nicole and Dr. Sullivan talking about gifted and talented and Christie.
So, all right. So the talented and gifted information in our packet highlights the work done by our current talented and gifted coordinator, Kristi Rush. The talented and gifted programming philosophy statement highlights the goal of the program uh in that students develop problem solving, conceptual understanding and critical thinking skills through a variety of experiences which take place both in and outside the classroom through collaboration with the tag coordinator, teachers and other districts back. Um then if we could scroll down for the identification process. Christie, she looks over standardized test data and she looks at students who are in the 95, 95th percentile and she'll mark them on her sheet, she looks at them. But in order to qualify and to be really considered talented and gifted, those students are in the 97th percentile. And not only, it's not just on a single test or in a single testing event, but um it's a, it's the criteria that has to be consistent, which we talk about as being three out of the four prior tests. So there's a pretty high bar set in order to be considered a talented and gifted student. And after flagging in the data and looking at the um, looking through that, um we also can consider other factors such as performance in the classroom and really look at the whole student. And making sure that the student, the decision process is based on the student's needs. So we can scroll down and then this is just an interesting chart that we included to really look about the difference because we have a lot of smart kids, but a truly gifted learner, because they're in that 97th percentile, um we're not, it's a, it's a low incident. Um there's less students in that area. So if you think about that, out of every other kids, you might have three students who would be in that talented and gifted and that's over, over a big data set. So if we continue to scroll down. And this part of the packet just talks about current programming practices in the various buildings. Um and it's broken down to what happens in target time, what happens in the classroom and then what happens in consultation with Christie. So um as we were rolling out the MLSS system, we really thought about this group of students and because it really isn't, our tag students aren't um a huge group, we really wanted to think about our students who are at an above grade level as well when we were thinking about this in our MLSS system. So we looked at data and um we did a bunch of research and we started, you can't just buy a program that says, hey, fifth graders who are above grade level or talented and gifted, you can purchase this and then you can go forth and prosper. And so instead, we spent a lot of time working with Christie in consultation and really brainstorming what we can do for our students. And we kind of came up with it across, especially right quick in middle school, two areas or two um primary tools that we use. The first being we continue to use our ready with our uh our students who are above grade level because it's personalized instruction. And so a student in sixth grade can get access to curriculum and standards that are two grade levels above or three grade levels above where they're at. But because we don't only want students on computers and working through individually that way, we also had teachers put in a ton of work and think about ways that they can engage students. in that problem solving and expanding those higher level thinking skills. And there's some really creative things that our teachers have come up with, like in the middle school, for example, they have a student newspaper that was created. And so when you're creating a newspaper and working as a team together, there's all sorts of problem solving and collaboration that has to take place in order to get to that problems or that final product. And they interviewed students, they thought about issues and they put forth a really great paper. Another example was Mr. Stumper had put together science projects for students. And students had to not just do the science project, like break the volcano and do the cute thing, but they had to dig deep into the science and write up a pretty in-depth paper about the science behind why whatever it was that occurred. My daughter, his, it was participated in that. And what her words were, I always feel weird bringing the personal stuff in, but what she said is, all the time I'm in school, I don't feel smart, but this made me feel really smart. So just that idea that she got to dig in and do some work on her own. It was, it felt good as a mom to hear that. So that's my other hat, my parent hat. So there's the, that's the end of the MLSS system. And we're really in the beginning stages of that. And I think that we have so many creative teachers and so many people working on this together that over time, we're going to be able to do more and more things. Oh, also on there, we talked about robotics. Kristi has written a lot of grants and put together a lot of work. And that robotics programming and coding is pretty impressive. So along those lines, there's also consultation. So as students are identified and teachers have questions, they contact Kristi. And where's the real power in having those conversations in the classroom and working together and what can happen in the classroom to look, work at those higher levels and expand and go not just like higher levels up, but more in depth in the grade level standards. And so the final piece. Oh, it's so important to think about, like at the high school, by the longest levels are the AP courses offered and virtual courses and the classes that students can take for credit and scripted credit. And finally, I just, I kind of wrote this last part out. So another support for gifted students in the district is the programming and events. Events like the Lego Talents, Robotathon were created by Kristi in collaboration with another tag teacher. Additionally, these programs cover a wide variety of topics from reading to robotics to geography to art. For many of these events, students spend months preparing, whether it's building, programming a robot or reading books for the Bella books. These programs provide incentive for talented and gifted students to go beyond the curriculum in their interest areas. So there's quite a list of these events that have been put together. And they go beyond the students that are in the tag program. I also had written down our numbers. So in that identification process that I went over earlier, through this process, currently eight students qualify in first through eighth grade in reading and sixth in math for talented and gifted programming. With three of those students overlapping in both reading and math. So our numbers are small, but we're hoping to grow. I went over just the kids who tested the 97th percentile in, on the last iReady test. And for, that's only one single event. So that's not saying, you know, they're not, can't say gifted yet, need more events. But there was 20 kids that scored above that 97th, 95th, 95th percentile in reading and 11 above the 95th percentile in math. There's growth, hopefully growth in the future that we see more.
And one thing I want to point out at the very bottom of this document, I listed the number of kids impacted by all of these events. And it was like 270 something kids that get to participate, what would be third through eighth grade in these events that we offer. So I just think that's a tremendous amount of kids who are benefiting from these events that we have.
Kristi, would you mind giving them just a little abbreviated summary of when you were a full-time gifted and talented teacher? Some of the thinking and how we landed where we are?
So when I first started in the school district, I was a full-time gifted and talented teacher along with, there was another half-time teacher, I think, that was at Cora Street. And so I did pull-out programming with those kids. There were kids at Gebhardt and then I had a reading class at the middle school. And we used to have a high math, we call it, at the middle school also. And what we were finding was these kids were achieving, but we got rid of actually the high math programming in the last seven, five years when we got new curriculum, because we weren't finding a difference on their test scores. They weren't growing exponentially because they were in this high course. They were doing very well and they were still doing well without that. If we have our really high rigorous curriculum that we're using, those kids are going to be challenged no matter what. You know, working with their peers and being pushed. I know we have a lot of kids that when they come from fifth grade to the middle school to use the new math curriculum that we have, Carnegie, I think it's called, they really struggle because it is so different. And a way, different way of thinking about math and how the problems are given to them, that it's a super good challenge for them that way anyway. Then I became just the coordinator for gifted and talented. And so just more of a consultant role in watching the data and helping with all of these events was the other part.
Thank you for that. And I'm just going to offer as well that when we started looking at the difference between bright and gifted, that three, you know, 97th percentile, that means 100 students, three should be there. We ended up taking like a reading class and we were putting many more than just the truly gifted kids in there. And then it was to make it a classroom section. And then it felt a lot more like the regular classroom. And so we felt that the pull-out model wasn't meeting their needs as well as particularly math that the curriculum spirals so much. We didn't want to pull them out of their grade level math because as you saw in that chart, the difference between bright and gifted, it doesn't mean that gifted kids just know all of that. They only need to hear it once or twice and then they can know it as opposed to the bright students who might need six to seven repetitions of it. So that got us to thinking, well, instead of pull-out, in the classroom with extension opportunities is, is a better way to meet their needs and make sure we're not creating gaps by skipping grade levels or, you know, skipping some of those content areas. And so this has been our model for.
Quite a while.
Five, six, seven years. Time goes really fast. I'm not sure how many years, but it's been a while.
Oh, for example, today I had a fifth grade teacher approach me after school. She's like, I have all of these kids that know how to add and subtract decimals. I taught them and they really get it. But then I have a whole bunch of other kids that don't get it. I'm like, well, what about those resources we created before? Where we have these tic-tac-toe boards, we have these real world problems that scaffold and they get harder and harder. And she's like, oh, along with the regular worksheet? I'm like, no, give that to them instead. They're ready for the next level of challenge. So that's being offered to everybody in the classroom, not just the kids labeled as gifted and talented. So this differentiation is good for all of the students.
Can you, so you're the gifted and talented coordinator now?
Yes.
And that's just part of your job? Can you, yeah, can you just explain that for me a little bit?
So I'm actually an instructional coach at Red Creek. It's my first year doing that. Before that, I was a fifth grade teacher. So it is just an add-on. It's a stipend position that I have. So I'm in charge of all of the events and being that consultant and helping make sure that when people need extra help with those gifted and talented or bright students or anybody, that's what I'm really liking about my new job. My, part of my job is going to all the PLC meetings, especially those planning meetings at the grade levels at Red Creek. So I jump in as soon as I see that, oh, so that happened the other day. One of the grade levels said, oh, well, I have students who are done with the minute testing of math or whatever, you know, their facts practice. And they were trying to figure out what to do next. And they were like, oh, we could jump into multiplication. It must've been second grade. I'm like, wait, don't jump into multiplication. What if you did a two-digit by two-digit addition instead? Like just showing teachers the natural progression of what the next step would be without jumping way ahead if you don't need to.
So, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that, Brad. A lot of this is, we're talking about the, for the TA, the tag program is essentially the three percent, the 97th percentile and higher. And as, as far as the last seven years, we have not, we've not separated from the, from the regular curriculum, correct? We've actually just taken the curriculum and said that we have to stick with that because we don't want students pull out and basically accelerate it beyond where the rest of the group is. Is that correct? Is that what you said? That's what it sounds like because from what you said, we're keeping them, we're not letting them skip ahead, we're not letting them go ahead and do multiplication versus we're just doing more addition.
Right. So digging, digging in and giving them, instead of pushing kids ahead, because we're finding that if you just keep plowing ahead, what's happening is if the kids don't have some instruction from the teacher, especially in math, we need that conceptual understanding to be built. So what we would find is a lot of these kids that were getting just pushed ahead really fast didn't have the conceptual understanding of what they were doing. They were really good memorizers of formulas, but that's really not helpful for them if they're not getting that conceptual understanding to go with it.
Was the assessment, oh, sorry, was the iReady assessment showing that they were not, you know, basically comprehending what they were learning then or not learning, I guess? Is that, is that what was showing up on the data? As far as, you know, basically when a student would, would jump ahead. I was, I'm just asking, I know there's a kind of technical questions and I'm, I'm an expert in that. These are either, by the way, so I'm just trying to understand how not separating them, the overachievers in a sense, is actually benefiting all the students, that's all.
So I guess it's hard to have data to like, oh, Nicole has data.
Well, just what we just talked about today was what we were seeing is we were seeing kids testing into that 97th percentile in elementary school. Because Kristi has amazing data over time and that falls off in middle school. Like they're gone. They're not, they're not even in the 95th percentile anymore. So that's what gets recorded. And I just wanted to say one more thing about math in particular. When we're talking about high math in the middle school, and this is not just a Black River Falls thing. What we have found is that, so what a lot of school districts were doing is they were doing Algebra I in eighth grade so they could get Algebra II done, geometry and get on into calculus. And then what we found is the ACT test given junior year is heavy Algebra II. So what most school districts or what the big push is now is to make sure that they're finishing Algebra II in their junior year. So you don't want them doing Algebra I, then going freshman year, sophomore year, then Algebra II. So they're wanting Algebra, so the, the theory is, is that you put Algebra I, freshman year, geometry, then Algebra II. And it's, then a attempt to really help students on that ACT test.
And then in that model, they're, they're taking both pre-calc and calc then, pre-calc such as.
That's what's hard about it because then they end up having to smush and do more than one math in one year.
I have one more follow-up, I guess. If, without removing the students, basically or accelerating any student and basically telling, if one student is achieving and you're basically saying that, that we gotta wait for the rest of the class to catch up to your level, is that serving, is that serving the students that are, you know, excelling?
That's a good question. Could you scroll to the top of the document? Because when we get to this level and we're thinking about kids in that 97th percentile or above, what we think in our philosophy is that there's not just one tag student out there. There's not just this one typical gifted child. So you really have to evaluate on a case-by-case basis and really look at the full data picture and not just the assessment data about what's happening in the classroom and what's going on with the student. Does that help? So it's possible that you still have a child that you accelerate and you move forward in a different way, but you're just going, this can be a case-by-case basis instead of like, this number says we do this.
The last part of that was, do we have adequate resources financially allocated for that, for the, to be able to do that? Because right now, it sounds like the teachers are handling all this aspect in one classroom per class that they have a segment of students and they're, and they're tasked to identify the students that are, obviously they're behind, they're tasked to, you know, keep the students on track of where they're supposed to be learning. And they're also tasked to basically separate out or somehow accelerate the gifted students. Are these students are just above average or just, you know, just maybe understand it something better? That's all. So basically, are there enough resources to actually adequately do that for every grade level throughout the entire curriculum?
And that's what makes teaching such a hard profession, honestly. This is what we do every single day, all day long. You have to. Differentiation is the name of the game. It really is. And I see my role as the person who can help the teachers to do that.
Thank you. That's all.
Looking over our school board policy 342.3 on gifted and talented. I was reading number three and it was about, it said, "The plan and program shall provide an opportunity for parental participation in the identification and referral process." Do we have parents that refer their kids? And then what do we do? Do we just go through the 97th percentile? Is that all that works?
We actually had that happen this year where we had a referral done and there was testing done. And the child showed to be very high achieving. And that was the first time since I've been here that we've gone that route. So it is possible, for sure.
I have a question. Based on the definition of somebody being gifted versus bright, a gifted student obviously has ideas and they, they're just, I don't know, there's something, they just move forward and I don't know how, I don't know, I'm not saying this right. But anyway, what I'm wondering is, do you guys try to talk to those kids about things that they want to pursue? Because a gifted person tends to have an interest in something that they really want to go after. So what, if anything, do we do to facilitate that?
So one thing with the middle school, with the things like the newspaper and things like that that Nicole was talking about, what I, when I consulted with those teachers who were going to be teaching those groups before the school year started, I really asked them to just stay back in the process. Like let the kids kind of, these are at or above students who are very bright. They don't need teachers holding their hands through things. So for example, we have these robots that the kids were building. I asked the teacher to just stay back, let them build what they want to build, give them some autonomy, let them figure it out, that productive struggle. We don't want these kids to be the kind of kids that are so smart. School is so easy for them all their whole school lives. And then they get to college and ball apart when it first gets hard. So I'm advocating hardcore for during target time at the middle school especially. Well, and I do it at Red Creek too with the kids that I see. Just that productive struggle and don't give them all the answers and let them figure some stuff out. They're smart enough to do that. Does that help?
Not necessarily. What if you ever ask the kids, what are, what is it you're really interested in? What do you want to go after that just brings you, you know, deepen something? Whatever the subject may be. I mean, it's great that you offer the Legos and the paper and my nap. But if the kids aren't interested in that, what if their interest is something completely different?
I really appreciate that question. Kristi and I were working through this and talking, looking through all the documents and the work that she's done over the years. We started reflecting on, of course, what can we do, how can we expand this, what can we do better? And one of the things that we talked about is with that MLSS process. It's not just the one teacher that has to make all these decisions, but it's a team and we're all working together to create a protocol around the things that we could do. And that would be a really good suggestion of, is having that student voice and moving forward in that program. So I appreciate that question.
I would just offer that I know that we've had some truly gifted kids go through the system. And I bet you could ask almost any teacher in that building what that kid was really into. And most teachers would be able to tell you because as you said, they're, they're sometimes very quirky kids, right? Because they just have this amazing ability to process some things while other things, not so much, right? And so I can think of a few kids and could name their passion right along with it. I feel like some of those kids wear it like a badge of honor. And almost anyone who talks to them, anytime they get any freedom of choice in an assignment, we could predict what that kid's gonna pick. And so I appreciate the idea of very being intentional about that and, and that, I like that thinking. I was just, as you were asking, I was thinking, I could name some of those kids' interests because they just really latch on and they become very open about it too.
And we have opportunities like the fourth grade heritage fair, the fifth grade math fair and the eighth grade science, you know, so they are still eventy kind of things, but it is an opportunity for them to show what they are passionate about.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. We particularly liked the information that you sent us and all the charts and for reference. So thank you so much. We'll move on to student success report for the update on Human Growth and Development Committee meeting.
So the human and, the Health and Human Development Ad-Hoc Committee met on November 2nd in accordance with school board policy 341.3. In attendance and who were invited were parents, teachers, administrators, students, healthcare professionals and members of the clergy. Um, in attendance, and who were invited were parents, teachers, administrators, students, healthcare professionals, and members of the clergy. Um, so, in the, during the meeting, the committee reviewed the Health and Human Development Policy, and then we listened to teachers present a curriculum overview for the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. So, I had planned on giving into a lot of detail, but in essence, what we talked about was that curriculum overview, which I will be bringing forward in more detail later. We had a really incredible discussion, because we were talking about, um, identity and sexual orientation, and we had students in there with really strong voices, and the community members, which who shared their concerns, and I just really appreciate the member, the members of that committee who came together and had a really good, deep conversation on this topic, and were respectful and listened to each other. Um, and we all agreed that we needed to meet again, and to finish that conversation, because these are big topics, and it's, um, yeah, it's hard work. So, we are planning on meeting to, again, soon, I am, been tasked with getting more information about what is happening in other school districts around this issue and topic, and presenting that to the committee, so we have more information to go on. And then we're gonna further our discussion, and we'll have final decisions, and we'll be, um, ready to present the full recommendation, recommendation of that committee to the board.
Amy and Troy, do you have anything to add?
Well, I have to apologize, and I did say Nicole, because I had a lot of things on my to-do list that day, and I completely spaced out a lot of time, so I unfortunately can't add to that conversation.
I can just add, Nicole, it was, it was a quick bit of discussion, and I'm hoping that we could, to continue that again, I appreciate Nicole's efforts on that. She did an excellent job, and I hope, soon, and soon, very soon, we can get back together and make a presentation to the board, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for that update, and we'll look forward to that at a later date. Next is finance and facilities under monthly expenditures, you have those in your packet. Are there's any that you would like for discussion, pulled out for discussion, or questions?
I have a motion to approve monthly expenditures as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried, facility update.
So included in your packet, you had the write-ups from both of the sites, I did ask more questions about the rocks, because you asked me that last time. So, this is what I now know, um, they said that the extent of the rock won't be fully known until they expose it, and so each time they dig down a layer, they're exposing more of that rock. Um, their bottom footing formwork is right at the elevation of the rock, so they're actually gonna be drilling in and anchoring the formwork into the rock versus pounding in the stakes. The part where it's going to be even more of a challenge is that some basin, basin, um, because it is localized to just one spot, and to combat that rock issue, they're gonna have to jackhammer, um, a bit for the larger excavator, and they believe that that hammer will break it up and chip away the rock. Um, but they're certainly tracking what additional costs are going to be associated with that, because we, and we certainly have an earth retention and site utility allowance, and then the contingency fund there, so they're certainly not hitting the panic button, but know that that rock over there is gonna be significant. Since they, he shared the report with us, um, last Thursday was the rain day, and unfortunately, when you drive by Forest Street, you can see where that new concrete wall is, and like coming up from where the old office is, um, it is exposed right down there, so there was some water down in that lower hallway that they just kept mopping up, and it's a temporary issue, because it has to be cleared in order for them to build up, we're just hoping that they can finish working on the whole building envelope before we get more moisture to slow them down a little bit, so.
I have one question about facilities, I don't buy the bus garage at night, and I didn't see any security lighting. Do we have any plans for that? It made me a little concerned when I looked at it.
Um, thank you for bringing up that question, I'm gonna ask Jill if she would like to augment the discussion at all. I will tell you that we've had some complaints from the neighbors that live by the new bus garage, that they went from living in a dark area to, oh my goodness, it is like a runway at the, um, so, we are really trying hard to find a balance between what is reasonable, what is necessary, and what is gonna be tolerated. Um, the neighbors have been extremely frustrated, and so, um, it has gone to a report to the county zoning, and so, we're working very hard on it. What we're hoping to do is, because of the way the canopies are, the canopy, and then the lights are up in there, there's nothing to deflect it, you get that raw bulb kind of coming at you, so our next best step is to look at like a shield that comes down over the bulb to deflect the direct light, so that at least it's just the, um, yeah, the glow, so we have played, it, it has gotten to the point that we will, um, have it lit. Kent will do something different that night, and he'll call the neighbors the next day and say, how did that work for you? And then he'll make another adjustment, call and say, how did that work for you? So, there's been a lot of back and forth around it, so. Um, Jill, is there any new, um, solutions, or we're still?
No, that is exactly right, yep, we've tried dimming them, we've tried half a bank off, we've tried twenty percent of the down, we've, we've tried a lot of things, now it's down to the, the deflector, so that they point straight down more than you meant right side.
So the day I went by, there was no, nothing, and that must have been one of those that, yeah, okay. So we, and honestly, with the daylight teams, I'm, it is dark when the drivers get there in the morning, it is dark when a lot of them are parking, so we talked to Greg Bush, who's just been such a great partner in trying to help us with all of this, um, trying to, do we mount some light on the post that just the drivers for their own safety, and so, these shields are not supposed to take that long, and that's our next best strategy. So we even talked about putting like an apron down at the end of the canopy to deflect that light, and so, I, I, it's just ironic that you brought up how dark it is, when we've been battling the light for quite some time.
It wasn't the light on when I went.
I bet the neighbors loved it that night.
Since we're talking about other facilities, are we working on the theater here too, is that in progress? I was just curious, because I know that I heard that was for the play, that was pretty difficult as well, wasn't it?
Absolutely, and so the, so the lights are either all on or they're all off, there's not the fancy dimmers and the spotlights, and so, um, that is something we're definitely gonna have to do a more comprehensive dig into. Our challenge is that the system is original to the building, so it's nineteen ninety-one is when it was all done. And if we are gonna start trying to patch this system, um, when there are so much better technology with the LED lights and the, you know, just the small, we've got a whole room with the boards and stuff now, where that would be so much smaller, but it's incredibly expensive, to be honest, um, Kent, I just said, could you just spitball something? He said, we're talking a lot of money, and remember, our sound system also needs the updates. We keep using all the temporary microphones, um, some of the soundboards were fried this summer as well. He thinks over two hundred thousand dollars to completely redo them, so, um, we will look at our annual maintenance fund, but we'll also look at writing grants, uh, this spring to see, um, there's a lot of partners that hope to use this space, and so we will just see what is possible. I appreciate, um, I, I know I said it to you guys in writing, I appreciate Greg Bush and, um, Justin Doherty, who's our theater manager, and Kent Weinman and Nick Witty, um, they just were fantastic last week, and the advisors, or the, um, directors of that musical, my goodness, there's not many music people that would be that relaxed the week of a musical, like, it was Friday morning at nine o'clock before they said, yep, you have lights, and you're gonna be able to go. And he was just, I was at the same guy, I meant the Veterans Day program, he was just chill about it, he said, well, we'll see, we'll keep practicing, and you know, we're gonna, we'll leave, they're gonna make it happen, and wow, he, he managed it well, and the kids did fantastic, so they were all ready to go, so. Yes, definitely on our radar, but not something we're gonna be able to just absorb in one year, for sure.
Could you talk more about the, um, the, was it the soundboards and the?
Yeah, so.
The band room or choir, I can't remember.
Here, oh, oh, for the, the referendum facility?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, the high school piece, when we talk about soundproofing for the, um, practice rooms within, um, the, um, soundproofing at the high school piece, um, so, there's the band room on one side, and then in the middle is offices and a suite of practice rooms, and then the choir room. And there is a higher level of sound dampening for all concrete walls, but obviously, all concrete walls are far more expensive than, um, two by fours and drywall, even with um, sound dampening drywall, which is a thing. Um, so, the challenge was that, and the architect, both of those solutions are sound rated at the same level, and so, we accepted the value engineering to downgrade all of the individual practice rooms from the concrete to the, um, stud and drywall that was sound rated at the same level. And then, um, one of the members of the team said, well, they say that, but they're not, concrete is a lot better, we're like, wait a minute, we balanced our budget accepting that value engineering. So, um, they talked about how much of our contingency are we gonna allocate into this? What was most important was that there could be kids in there practicing while there were classes going on, and so we semi-compromised the envelope around the offices and all the practice rooms, those are gonna have the concrete walls, but the walls that divide the practice rooms are not going to have the concrete. So they've talked about what other ceiling surfaces can they use that would increase that sound dampening ability? Um, they said you could put, um, one of the, somebody from the construction management team said, they just did, uh, a facility where they put like two layers of drywall, and that helped them reach the same as the concrete, and so they believe that, because the concrete puddings would have needed to be poured, um, and it was almost, um, I think it was like seventy-five thousand dollars to get the concrete puddings in, and make those concrete walls, because in order to get the value of it, the concrete walls, where they had to go on all the way up, you can't go concrete partially, and then put a drop ceiling, and think you're gonna reap the benefits of that sound dampening. So, we took the value engineering, we compromised that, that envelope around those practice rooms is going to have the higher, more highly effective, um, solution, and then the individual dividing by the practice rooms, we're going to play with some other solutions, we asked them if we could go see some other, uh, facilities that they've built with either the double drywall or extra layers of insulation inside, and, and those other solutions.
Anything else on facility updates? We will move to our policy committee board report, this is our second reading of our policies that you saw last month in detail, are there any that you would like pulled out for discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion for consent agenda to hold the approval?
Mayor Joe, hold on a moment.
Okay.
Oh, the, what, is, the policy one, no, boy.
One eighty-six?
One eighty-six, yeah, that's not the rule, it's the policy, correct? I'm pulling it up myself here right outside. Just the, the one, the one part of the, we removed, we removed part, part of the section there, which was very, oh, thank you. A period of public comment should be scheduled all regular and special. That word meeting should be there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all it was, it was, it's just a type of graphical area, it wasn't anything else, that's all.
And so our discussions last time were whether it should be chow or meat, and you very much wanted chow, and I heard at least two other board members that said, um, they would not deny public comment, and so I opted to do this, and left it open to the discussion.
Thank you, that's all it was, it wasn't major, I just wanted to make sure that we are all on the same page, that's all.
Any others? Is there a motion for consent agenda approval?
Hold on a second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Now we're at the public comment, and we'll start with the number one.
Betsy Satabauer, power whispers, with COVID updates, and Kent Jacobson on deck.
Good evening, uh, Betsy Satabauer, Hickson, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a parent. At the last board meeting on October eighteenth, I was impressed that a majority of you took the time to dig for information about a sheet of paper that a community member proposed. Many of you dug where this paper came from, and decided it went from a national partisan group. Now, if you could only dig on the masks and the COVID vaccines, all we are asking is to make masks optional, and to take the vaccine clinic out of our school buildings and back to the health facility where they belong. The CDC is a partisan organization, no one was voted in. Many states and districts across our great country have masks that are optional. Right around us, we have Neophyll, Arcadia, Whitehall, Como, their mask optional. Their COVID cases are very similar to ours, and in some, some instances have less cases per week. Our district continuously has less than one percent cases, there's no pandemic, according to the definition. Numerous studies have shown that masks are not good for our children, especially during this critical age of learning. You tried this last year at your work, our kids are getting farther and farther behind, one reason is the barrier on their face. Some of you think the CDC makes laws, that's not true, it makes suggestions. I suggest you re-watch Schoolhouse Rocks and how laws are made. You need to start putting fear aside and make masks optional now, and not wait till next year. One more thing, I suggest you dig and look into Kettle Moraine School District's pending lawsuit of their preferred pronouns and name change of asking of students. As the Wisconsin and US Constitution, the most fundamental and longest-recognized inherent rights is the rights of parents to direct the upbringing and education of their children under their control. Numerous cases have shown that minors cannot legally change their name without parental consent. So asking for preferred pronouns or preferred names needs to stop in our high school and in our middle school. It's time to continue the digging investigation that you guys started last month, with making masks optional, vaccine clinics out of our school buildings, and to stop asking for personal pronouns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty?
And Jeff Pauline is on deck.
Is someone back there chiming? Are you timing? No, okay, sorry, sorry, I got it, sorry, Betty.
Um, I was going to speak about standards-based rating, but it's not on the agenda, and this is getting to be a long meeting, so I'm gonna shift a little bit and speak to the gifted and talented program that you have here. One of the things that I know to be true is that intelligence is not a fixed trade, trait. Brain research has discovered that an enriched environment, full of challenges, novel ideas, coupled with a willingness to challenge oneself, will grow intelligence. That makes it possible for an individual to achieve exceptional pursuits and achievement beyond what their measured IQ would indicate. So, I would suggest to you that as we have, over the past eight years diminished our investments in gifted and talented programs, we're diminishing opportunities for a lot of students who may be able to achieve that category with, with if they had an enriched environment. If you look at our results, what we've achieved is we have actually decreased the number of exceed students. Our, that category is very small in our school district right now, and we've grown what we're investing in, which is gap closing. And so it doesn't seem an impossible leap to say that if we used at least one interventionalist, or one individual dedicated to identify children who may have a chance to exceed what our proficiency levels are, that it would make sense to do that, and perhaps we would once again try to grow that top category, that's all I have to say, thank you. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, I didn't introduce myself, I'm Patty Jacobson, sorry. But I also, if anyone had anything to do with WASB suspending their relationship with the National School Board Association, I'd like to thank those of you who had something to do with that, thank you, thank you.
Dr. Pauline is next.
And Amanda Sharp is on deck.
Amanda Sharp on deck.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Pauline, retired MP and taxpayer. Used to be a sideline position at some of the athletic events. And, there is not COVID vaccine available for children five and over, everyone five and over will soon have got a chance to receive COVID vaccine. Should masks at school then become optional? I'm going to share several reasons why this school district should continue to require masks until Jackson County COVID and flu infection rates are low or moderate. First, COVID vaccine is considered eighty to ninety percent effective, being vaccinated does not totally protect from COVID infection, makes it about four times less likely. Being vaccinated does not totally protect from hospitalization, it makes hospitalization about ten times less likely. And being vaccinated does not totally protect from death by COVID, as sadly noted by the recent death of General Holden Powell, it makes death about ten times less likely. Being vaccinated does not totally prevent you from spreading COVID to those around you, it cuts the viral load that you are sharing, if you are infected, to about one-ten. It cuts the viral load that you are sharing, if you are infected, to about 1/10 of the unvaccinated. Wisconsin hospitals are still extremely busy with COVID cases. Paramedics from Oak Claire are on overtime, this very night transferring COVID patients to Rochester Mayo. ICUs are overloaded in Wisconsin. Nursing staffs are shorthanded. Medical, many medical providers are experiencing burnout. Patients with routine emergencies like heart attacks, strokes, or motor vehicle accidents face delays in transport and care. And flu season is just ahead of us. Last year, we had the lowest number of flu cases in decades. Distancing and masks were part of the reason. The first two weeks of school in our county saw an unplanned experiment in the effectiveness of masking. Alma Center and Melrose School Districts were mask optional and had four times the quarantine absences as Black River Falls School District where masks were required. Alma Center and Melrose switched mandatory masking after that two-week trial. There are no larger social gatherings in Jackson County than school days and school events. If we want to slow the spread of COVID in Jackson County, if we want to improve school attendance over the winter months, we want to ease the burden on our health system, if we want to protect our students and staff, we should continue requiring masks until the infection rates of COVID and flu in Jackson County are low or moderate. That may be spring of 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Sharp.
Amanda Sharp.
And then Jeanne Cron is on deck.
Dr. Cron.
My name is Amanda Sharp. I am a parent and taxpayer of Black River Falls School District. I've been watching these meetings. I've been doing a lot of research on the DPI website. I don't tend to just read something in a paper and take it for granted. I take a look at things above and beyond what you're just told in the media and on social media. And what really struck me as interesting was a quote I read by Norman Vincent Peale recently. And it said, "Most of us would rather be ruined by praise than saved by criticism." And that is what I see when I look at the board, the administration of Black River Falls School District, and frankly, our community. Um, which, I, at the annual meeting, Jill presented wonderfully about our financial status. I thought that was great. We spent a lot of time hyping up some of the wonderful things that the district has accomplished. And there are some fantastic things. And the fact that we are 402 in this state is, the bottom 5% is still unacceptable. It doesn't take away from the successes. The successes are the successes. But at one point, as a community, as administrators, as teachers, as a board, as parents, can we start having a conversation about the failings in this district? Uh, excuse me. Our ACT scores, and I'm going to speak very generally right now, and I trust that people who actually care can go on the DPI public dashboard and will follow this up for themselves. We average three to four points below the state average on pretty much every category on the ACT. You know, you might look at me and go, why do you care? My last kid is a senior. I care because these kids are the ones that are going to grow up to take care of this community and take care of our country. And a kid that can't do basic math is not the kid I want growing up to be the nurse that's going to dose my medication and kill me. Our kids deserve better. We deserve better as a community. We have a responsibility to do better for them. It doesn't matter who's to blame anymore. We are all responsible for fixing this. But as long as we continue to break our shoulders, patting ourselves on the back and not be able to stop taking it personally and address the failings, we are not going to make any progress for these kids. And frankly, we're not going to make any progress for ourselves either. We have got to do better. And as a parent, I can admit, I haven't paid attention to what happened at the district level. I trusted the teachers directly in charge of my children, and for the most part, they were wonderful. But there is a reason we are, what is it again? 402? We're in the bottom 5%. I'm not going to be a milk, I'm not going to drop off the milking cookies anymore. I want to know what's going on and I want to know what are our plans to fix it. If you want parental engagement, I think you can get it. But it's not just going to be in the form of, here's some extra boxes of Kleenex. You're going to have to really listen to those parents and be accountable to where our children are being failed. We're failing. We are failing. We are failing our taxpayers. We are failing our community. We are failing our country. We are failing our children. They deserve better than 402. So what needs to happen in order for things to get better? And that's what I would encourage the board to look at. And I would encourage, I'm sorry, I know it's hard when you're, you're trying to do a job. But we have to do better.
Thank you. Dr. Cron? Dr. Cron?
You too, pass.
Okay, pass. Who's next, Nicole? Okay. Now, thank you for all that input. We'll have now the COVID update.
So I did not prepare a lot of materials for you. Our COVID dashboard is still on the website. Anytime you are interested, I would share that our quarantine number right now is quite high. And here's my analysis as to why. In the beginning of the school year, we had a lot of cases, not a lot. Our cases were primarily at the older levels. And so we were able to carve out and quarantine very small numbers of kids around those students. In the last couple of weeks, the majority of our cases have been at Forest Street or at Red Creek. And in the 4K kindergarten and first grade classrooms, when there's a positive case, those kids are so much more all over each other. And so at the youngest levels, it is very difficult for us to carve out which students were within that three-foot radius for 15 minutes or more. And so even though, like this morning, I got the dashboard and there are eight active cases and there were 89 students that were currently quarantined. There are three full classrooms from Forest Street right now, simply because of the younger students and the cases. So I would just provide that update for you. I also wanted to share with you that, sorry. In talking with Public Health last week and our constant communications with the other two school districts in the county, as we certainly have heard from everybody who's been speaking on the mask issue, there are districts doing it both ways. And, and to be honest, that is one of the greatest challenges with COVID, that everybody is doing the very best that they can and trying to make it functional and responsible for their local community, right? So when our ed team got together this past summer to talk about what our recommendation to the board was going to be, a very significant factor in that was the lack of pediatric vaccine. So that idea that all of our students can't even choose to protect themselves, right? Our staff, their number one priority was not having to teach both virtually and face-to-face. And so if we have no vaccine available for our youngest students, that was a challenge because more would choose to stay home, all of those pieces. And then the other factor was that if we were fully masked, that we would quarantine students that were in a three-foot radius as opposed to the six-foot radius. So back to that goal of most students in the school for the most amount of time. So all of that being said, the availability of the pediatric vaccine, both Alma Center, Melrose, Mendoza, and us, and me, we're talking to Public Health and are interested in starting the conversation about if anybody who wants to get vaccinated again, 100% family choice, but if people who want to get vaccinated have that opportunity to go all the way through the vaccine cycle with masks being required at school, is it time to consider, when we come back in January, having masks, family choice? Because by that point, almost all of our students will be able to be vaccinated if they were interested in getting vaccinated. Our 4K kids would be the only ones that weren't eligible for 4K and early childhood, would not be eligible for vaccine at that point. So I wanted to start that conversation and gather some thoughts and some feedback. And clearly, with every single decision we make, we are really deciding how much risk we're willing to take and how much risk we're willing to mitigate. And so wanted to share that thinking right now.
I just want to revisit the K through, is it K through one, that the classroom that we have quarantined? I'm sorry.
One more time, understanding, I'm so sorry. Could you say it one more time?
I'm sorry.
It says the speakers are pointing that way, I mean, but...
This is, this is kindergarten, the first graders right now on Forest Street that are charred classrooms? Or is it second grade as well?
So there's not a hard and fast rule either way, and that does help, sorry. They probably can't hear you, so I apologize. It's not a hard and fast rule every single time. We, in fact, Elizabeth went in and was sitting in a kindergarten classroom this morning and where they circle up for morning meeting, it's just too small. If their morning meeting lasted 30 minutes, for 25 minutes, then everybody is a close contact. Sometimes the teacher has a larger perfect circle up area, and so it wouldn't be. So there's not a hard and fast rule. It just, more often than not, are, the younger the kid, the more students are being quarantined.
Try both. I'll try to speak clearly here. So for the youngest kids that are in Forest Street, that when we are quarantining entire classrooms, and that's not just exclusive to Black River Falls, I can say from experience, is the masks effective then? Because if we're quarantining entire classrooms based on contact with masks, well then, what is the purpose of the mask? I don't see the, I don't see the correlation there. I've had a difficulty with other situations.
So I don't think that we're talking about mask efficacy. What we're talking about is the exposure, right? And so I, I wouldn't say that a kindergarten mask is less effective than a ninth grade mask, than a, you know, whatever. It's who's inside that, that circle, right? At the youngest levels, those kids are in each other's space. And like for reading, they have different work groups that they move around in. And then they switch to math and those groups are shook up. That whole differentiated instruction, that's where a lot of that grouping happens. So kindergarten kids, first grade kids, they end up just being in each other's spaces an awful lot more. High school kids, they like their space, right? And so it, it really boils down to, we're not saying the mask is less effective. We're saying the exposure is much different because the kids are just in that much close contact.
Well, the reason I bring it up is when, if we did go family optional with masks, but the quarantining still exists and it would be actually more involved because now we're going to say the efficacy of masks is no longer there because it's optional. I'm just bringing it up for, just for middle school and...
100%. So the masking, so if we are going to follow Public Health, if we are going to not be fully masked, then that circle goes to six feet. And so if we say masks are family choice and the student who tests positive is wearing a mask and there's a kid who sits here who's wearing a mask, they would not be a close contact because they were wearing it appropriately, right? So we would still apply the same rules, it would just not be an automatic that everyone was masked. So chances are, if we switch to family choice for masks, we would end up quarantining more students. That is a factual statement.
The quarantining is still required or recommended, I guess, it's just not required?
100% recommended.
Recommended by Public Health. What is their input? And I didn't understand it quite, if they recommend, if they're actually allowing or saying that it's within their recommendations to go family option?
No, they don't like it at all.
Okay, fair enough. That's why I was kind of like, go ahead.
They don't like it.
So I have a question. We have the testing site. What is this, what is the testing going to mitigate the numbers of kids that are being quarantined by?
Yeah, so we have, it's a mix bag, which families are choosing to do the test to stay, test to stay. It is common sense that the more you test, the more positive cases you're going to find, right? And, well, I think it's common sense, I shouldn't speak like that because not everyone may agree. So we definitely have cases that a child has been deemed to be a close contact and then somebody through the test to state protocol may end up testing positive. You may think that is from the school exposure, but here's the significant challenge, that the schools are the only ones mitigating with the consistent use of face masks. So if a student is deemed to be a close contact, I'm 100% sure we've had a student who was on the test to state protocol as a close contact and then ended up testing positive to find out that they were at a sleepover over the weekend with a cousin who also tested positive in another district, right? So we can only control our piece of it. And so it would be difficult to say masks work in the classroom or masks don't work in the classroom because our kids don't just live in their classroom. They live at hockey practice and they live at Sunday school and they live at, you know, overnights and all of that stuff. And so that's a slippery slope to say the masks do or don't work based off of what's happening just in the classroom.
That wasn't really my question.
I'm sorry.
My, so we have the ability to test so that they can stay in school?
For the families that are choosing that, it is being effective. I hope any of the kids is...
So if we've got 89 kids in these different grades, it's because their parents are saying, no, I don't want them to swap.
Correct. I don't care to test, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to understand.
Sure, sorry about that. Your question was way more simple than I planned on it. Any other questions?
Okay, we'll move on to approving the meeting minutes. You receive those in your packet, any of those that you want pulled out for discussion. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Brad has made a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Dr. Stevenson's report is next.
First of all, I wanted to highlight some pretty amazing Veterans Day programs. And I'm going to use one specific example. So at the elementary level, they decided to videotape the performances and then created a video that was shared via social media. It was amazing. So everyone loves when they get to come in and we get the high fives and all that stuff, get to see everyone. In this case, this child from Red Creek had a grandpa that never would have driven up for Veterans Day program in any way, shape, or form, but received the link to the video and was just amazed at the amazing work that the kids did. So just wanted to highlight that while we would have preferred to be able to do it differently, it was nice that other people were impacted. The middle school and high school still gathered at the field coast and had a fantastic program. The guest speaker was of course our Penn Schoolcraft, who's got a long, long, long history of leading Veterans Day programs in our community. And then Chris Williams, who is, works for the district, also was the honored speaker of the day. So it was fantastic. I wanted to update everyone on what is happening with our elementary Christmas programs. So middle school and high school holiday programs typically don't pack the auditorium as much as the elementary ones do. And so we don't feel like we need to make the same mitigation for those programs. But the elementary ones, it is always standing room only. And so what we are doing to allow for still live performances is that each student will be given two tickets and they can invite whom they would like with their two tickets. Of course, if there are families that are split, we will make allowances so that there's not a... We will work with families to try to make that work, but that will allow for live Christmas programs, which everyone is excited about. I wanted to talk with you, I have a whole bunch of dates that I need to run by the board. But before we get to that, I want to also talk a little bit about some changes with the Get Heart programming. So you may recall that in January of 2020, we made some significant changes to programming over there. We started a program that was called the Behavior Deferred Expulsion Program. Our intention was to somewhat mirror the AODA deferred expulsion program that the district has. Our challenge is that it was supposed to start like February and then school shut down in March, right? And then last year, 35% of our students were virtual. And so this fall, we are seeing some significant needs that are, that are rising. We have some students who have not physically attended school in our classrooms, that they haven't been here since March of 2020. The needs are great and their, our ability to manage that in the middle school and high school setting are extremely challenging. So you likely have heard of the Nexus program that has been functioning there for many years. The Nexus program has two adults that facilitate that learning. Last year, we graduated a couple of our Nexus kids. And so the numbers for those two adults are relatively smaller right now. And we moved another adult over there for that Behavior Deferred Expulsion program. I've been working with Andy Tampe and Kim Penza and Nate Erickson from the middle school and the staff over at Get Heart. And Nicole has been helpful with the curriculum side of things and talking about how could we leverage those three full-time adults in a way to serve more students as opposed to the silo of the Nexus program and the BDEP? Could we serve more students' needs by having a program that wasn't, well, that was more inclusive, I guess, than, than those separate little things? Honestly, we have checked into the Oak Fair Academy. This is going to go way back to when we said... This is going to go way back to when we started the NEXUS program. To send one student to the O'Clare Academy, one student to the O'Clare Academy costs, I think, over $100,000 a year. And that's one student that is getting their needs, well, hopefully getting their needs met, right? So we started the NEXUS program thinking that all our staff members would be able to serve more students here. Now, obviously, these are some of our most significantly challenged students. The O'Clare Academy is full because every district is struggling with some students with just some significant needs after, I won't predict why, but there's lots of districts struggling. And so the O'Clare Academy doesn't have room. We also have the Northwest Journeys that is right here in town and struggling with capacity issues there as well. None of us feel great about the linkage to expulsion for that behavior program right out of the gate. We feel like there are so many other things that we could talk about and, and try before we start talking about expulsion. And so we are doing an awful lot of talking about what could we create that felt more like the O'Clare Academy and Northwest Journey? And the piece that they will have that we have not is that they have the true professional therapist counselors that are coming in, leaning on Amy Hunter and the relationships that she's built with the providers in our community. The family would still always have a choice in this. But we are wondering about the efficacy of getting at the root cause for some of these students and providing some group counseling, not from a school counselor, but from a therapist counselor, and using some of our ESAR funds and that student mental health grant that we have. Talking about being able to serve more students. And the structure that we're creating is they go in with some very, very specific goals. And every two weeks, there's a check-in between their advisor there, the parent, and the student, and they set their goal for the next two weeks. Before they even go there, we've got a re-entry goal, that what it would look like to come back. Lots of discussion about there's never a student that either lives there or comes right back, but that there's a transition process that's embedded into it. When we started the BDEP, it got shut down so quickly. And last year, it just never, it never was what we had originally designed it to be. And so it was not serving our needs or our students. But how could we think about those three adults over there? And Nancy Forman, sorry, another adult is also there doing the Phoenix program. And the Phoenix program still has a full load in the morning. And then there's a few Phoenix kids in the afternoon, in addition to some one-on-one tutoring. So we talked about how could we use all four of those adults to better support a larger group of students and design the programming in a way that was less free, like less siloed, like either this or expulsion, more of a let's give this our very best try. It may end in expulsion, but there's a lot of other steps and partnership opportunities that we could try before that. So the team is talking. We're working out a lot of the kinks and the processes and would love to share back with you at our next meeting. But we wanted you to know that we're going to start having conversations with some parents about potential placements over there. Any questions about that? Oh.
Just, you're still in development process right now, right now? So the existing programs are still serving their function right now, as of right now?
So there's still students in NEXUS and definitely still students in Phoenix and the BDEP. This year, we did not place anybody in that program because none of us liked the linkage to direct expulsion. So that person has been helping to serve the students in those other programs. All right. And then the dates that I have for the board. So this coming Friday, if any of you are available, there are coffee and snack carts rolling around each one of the schools. If you are available, please let me know because the principals are painting on facilitating that, but they could use some help if available. Monday, November 29th, we are serving breakfast for.
Time on Fridays.
I think 8:00 AM is when the carts were going to be ready, so 8 o'clock on Friday morning. Yep, Monday, November 29th, serving breakfast for all of the secondary out of the high school commons. Breakfast starts at 7:30. I'd love your help about 7:00 if possible. November 29th, remember, we scheduled a special meeting for that evening. December 13th, we scheduled a special meeting simply because we need to sell the bonds for that last piece of the referendum. I'm asking you, would it be okay with you if we made that a special meeting, make it longer, and do our deeper dive into the report card work on that night? Or would you rather try to find a night sooner? My concern is with Thanksgiving in there, I don't know how much sooner than December 13th we could get together, but I could do a doodle if you would prefer.
Combining them is fine with me, but I know some people have conflicts.
I, I won't be present that night, but I, I can get that information in another way.
Okay. Did anyone feel a greater sense of urgency that you wanted to find a date prior to December 13th? Or can we do both of those in one night?
Both in one night works.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. And then finally, December 20th, board meeting. The theater is extremely busy in December. And this takes a lot of setup from our tech person. He, he, there's a lot of tech happening for these meetings. What are the wishes of the board and our ability to move back to the boardroom versus another site for December's meeting?
If the crowd is the same as tonight, the boardroom will work fine.
How can we predict that?
We can't.
It depends on what's on the agenda. It's always the case, so that's tricky.
I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm just saying the agenda drives participation quite often, so. So what is on our agenda that we can discuss, you know, I don't know. I understand, I understand that this is may not, is Red Creek an option at that time?
Yeah, I understand what your preference is.
Well, if this is not, if the theater's not available because of students you cite, I think Red Creek would be an alternative that would be acceptable. Would that be?
And so at what point will we decide to go back to the boardroom, if at all? I mean, if you're telling me that this is your new normal and you would like to stay in a much larger facility, then we'll just commit to that? And I guess I'm just wondering what the feelings of the whole board are. Because when I make the initial agenda, I like pick the location like, oh, I think they said they wanted to stay in the theater, but I feel like I'd like some input from you.
I'm ready to go back to the boardroom.
I think that as long as we want everybody to be masked and socially distanced, we need to be better at Red Creek if, as long as the participation numbers stay higher like this. My feeling anyway. Yes, I do like adding it, and the boardroom better. It's easier to hear everybody and whatnot, but we've got to make accommodations too.
I like that.
Probably for the next one, maybe Red Creek, and then we'll see after that. That's all I feel.
I'm seeing heads nodding at Red Creek.
And if we're, we're just, to be clear, we're talking the 20th.
I might want to use your microphone so I just can hear. We're talking.
Just to be clear, hey, I'm looking at the calendar here.
December 20th.
So December, we're talking December 20th because the 13th is just a special meeting.
I was gonna do the special at the boardroom. I assume that's okay? All right. That was all of my date. Thank you.
At this time, I'm just going to invite any of the administrators. If they'd like to share anything, we have some time tonight. If anyone wants to come up and share anything. They're all looking. I know I'm surprising you. That's okay. Okay.
We did discuss beforehand that it's been a really long time since we've gotten the school reports. And so if we could plan for maybe secondary in December and elementary in January or flip-flop, but I believe the board would appreciate getting to hear more from the building.
Okay, okay. We'll count on you next time then. Okay. Next is WASB. Everyone has gotten some communication from WASB. And does anyone have any questions on that communication? Basically, the board of directors, which I am a part of, voted to withdraw participation from NSBA programs and services. And today, there was this message that went out that you also have in front of you with some questions and answers that you might have on that. There is policy within WASB that we belong to a national organization. So there is that option being worked on of another national organization being created. And in our policies, it does state that in order to withdraw, we would have to have a vote of the 421 school districts in the state of Wisconsin. So I'll have more information for you that will happen at the delegate assembly in January. But I, I do have lots of information and can share more if you want more of that. Amy and I and Ann attended the regional meeting in Alaska. And it was a good training. It was a smaller gathering than usual because of our situation. But we had 29 people attend from around our region. And we explored the why we are on the school board. And that was a good conversation with just, just the three of us. And then we shared out with the group, as well as we had a legislative update. Anything else on that? School board connection opportunities.
I just gave you the list.
Yeah, and we, many of us did the breakfast at Red Creek. So I hope we can do the upper grades later. And attending.
Before we get to future agenda, and I just thought of something else that I've heard of other districts doing that I would throw out for consideration regarding the face coverings. I am aware of other districts that require face coverings during the school day where all students are required to attend, and they make them optional for after-school events because then people are choosing whether they participate in those events or not. I just would throw that out there, and I would share with the board that adults in our community coming into our schools have much greater challenges wearing face coverings than during, or students during the school day. And so I would just throw that out there as another possibility that there are districts that during the school day, masks are required, and then after school, they are family masks.
Anybody else want to talk about opportunities that they've had?
I was just going to say that I attended the veterans program at the high school. It was wonderful. And then I went back and watched the virtual one, and I was so proud of that too. So I was very proud of all of our students. Very well behaved at the middle school and high school. I looked at the mask-wearing. They did a nice job with that. But at the elementary, it was wonderful how the person could fuse together all the grade levels into the same songs. It was amazing. And I also came to the light raising today at the middle school, and that was very nice also.
Future agenda items. I don't know. Okay, this, I don't know if this is a future agenda item, but you know, when we move public comment to the end, we did it for a reason. I might like to revisit that because I think of some of the people that are waiting all the way through our meeting to do the public comment. So I think I'd like to talk about it again sometime. What we have procedures in place if anything occurs, so I'd like to revisit that topic. Troy?
Yeah, I guess since we've discussed it with the COVID update, I think it's time to put it on the agenda, I guess, if we're gonna go. Because limbo was really hard to figure out what we're gonna do. So if we just plan ahead into the December 20th meeting, on the regular meeting, if we made that discussing what our future options are for masking and other options that we talked about, that Shelley talked about tonight. And the last thing, as I had, this is something that's been, I think, for me, it's been a struggle. The Student Success Committee, when we, when we didn't disband it, we rolled it into the regular meetings, I don't think we're giving it enough attention that it needs sometimes where we could have a committee level, where we can actually have faculty and the public input like we need to have at a committee. We have committees for, for a reason, and part of that is for recommendations that can present the facts to the board. I, I would suggest or even offer that the fact that a committee is open to everyone to participate in, I, I can, I can join any of the, you know, sit in on any policy committee or anything like that. And I, I just can't vote, but I can be informed. And I think that's something we need to look again, just to look at again because there's so much going on in all these categories. I think everyone deserves attention that we can give it to its fullest. So I'd like to add that back onto the agenda if we could, that would state that, let's revisit the option of reconvening the Student Success Committee as a committee, separate from the actual board meeting. I understand that everyone wants to be a part, participant in this, and I totally agree, I understand that as well. So that's all.
So just procedurally, I'm trying to remember when we moved from, I don't know that it was a vote versus a board discussion. I really would have to go back and check because I don't remember that. I wonder if when we are gathered for the special meeting on the 13th, we could have some discussion about that? Does that work for your recommendation?
I do remember that conversation, and that was during our restructuring time in April when we voted on, welcomed new members or, and voted on our structure. And that was when we decided to have the student success reports to the whole board and, and really dig in a little bit deeper. So we weren't hearing it twice.
But I don't remember if we voted on that decision or if that was a discussion. We absolutely voted on other structuring things. I don't know if that was a discussion or a vote. I don't recall it off the top of my head.
I'm, I'm just thinking when we restructure, when we vote on officers and we structure our committees, I think that's part of that meeting.
We need to look at that.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to look, but I, I do remember that's when it was, when we changed.
So what we're saying that right now was not on the agenda yet, but we're gonna revisit it on the special meeting on the 13th. Is that correct?
That's what I was gonna suggest because right now, we should have a lot of dialogue about it because it hasn't been noticed or anything. And so I was suggesting we put it on the December 13th agenda so that the board could have conversation. I recognize you're suggesting it. I don't know what the rest of the board members think. So that was my point in suggesting that. Would you prefer it on the 20th instead of the 13th? Is that what you were?
No, no, I just want to, it's not just a discussion. It doesn't have to be an action item, correct? It just could be on the agenda of discussions. We can actually discuss it.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping for. Yes.
Anything else? During any, nothing else? Let's.
Is there a topic that you want on the student success report for December since it's likely there won't be a change by then?
Well, a specific topic?
Well, that's how we landed with Gift and Talented. That's how we landed with it. So.
The committee, basically, yeah, the discussion of the committee is basically with, that's what I mean. The committee is more than just.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Topics. I apologize.
I didn't ask that question very clearly.
Yeah, what do you mean, I guess?
I assumed by the December 20th meeting, we may or may not have restructured to make a committee instead of a report to the full board. And so usually, the report from Nicole is a topic that the board has suggested they wanted to hear more about. So I was, in case we don't have a new structure, and by the December 20th meeting, by the 13th, the agenda for the 20th already has to be published in the paper. Do you have a topic in mind that you would like for the 20th? I'm sorry if I'm being messy about it, but that agenda is out in the paper super early.
I understand what you're saying now. I apologize. The 7:30 subject for tonight would be the update to Human Growth and Development. And I assume there will be more recommendations because right now, tonight, it wasn't complete. So I assume that will be one topic that will be on there. Is that fair to estimate or not?
Do you think we'll be meeting in the next weeks to make that happen by the 20th? I was gonna put out some dates and see, I'm not sure if it'll be ready. Okay, just depending on the dates work. Okay.
Anything else? Hearing none is your motion to adjourn.
I still hold.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you.